Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Nice to see everybody. My name is Josh Chardy. I'm a resident of Newport, Maine. I've been appointed the deputy moderator. So I'm the person who's going to run the meeting tonight without objection. And I think which is consistent with the custom of you folks in this town is we're going to use the Maine Moderator's Manual. That's sort of a combination of Robert's Rules of Order, common sense. It is used by a lot of towns and basically straightforward goals. Be courteous, speak one at a time, and vote. And it's my job to make sure that the votes are clear and that the vote outcomes are certain. A few housekeeping measures. I'm pleased to announce the results of the election for select man. Select man Heather Frye with 103 votes, John Lovell with 173 votes and 14 write-ins. John's the winner. RSU 22 Director Luke Field with 145 votes, William Seab with 121 votes and 24 write-ins. So Luke Fields is the winner. So those announcements, and it's my understanding they will be sworn in and due course. And thank you for everybody who ran and to those who are willing to serve. Without objection, we'll turn it to the businesses meeting Article 3. And I'll go fast between the articles, but that's just to get us to if there is debate, you can take as much time as you want to debate. But I move fast between the articles so I can get to businesses now. Okay, without objection, Article 3, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to activate road commissioners. What is your pleasure on Article 3?
Make motion to accept Article 3 as written.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 3 as printed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 3 prevails. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $794 received from the state for its stone wheel registrations, New Bern countryside virus, stone wheel club for the maintenance of their system or network of stone wheel trails. What is your pleasure on Article 4?
Make motion to accept Article 4 as written.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 4 as printed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 4 prevails. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to set the date of property taxes will be due in two equal payments on November 7, 2024, and March 6, 2025, and fix the rate of interest at 8.5% when charged in unpaid amounts beginning December 7, 2024, and April 6, 2025. Moderator notes, maximum rate set by the state may use 8.5%. What is your pleasure on Article 5?
Make motion to accept Article 5 as written.
Motion to be made, second, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
What's the current rate?
Question's been posed to the chair. What's the current rate?
The state maximum is eight and a half.
Right, what are we paying right now?
Eight. Eight.
Eight.
Any further discussion of questions on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 5 prevails. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to spend overlay funds for maintenance and unanticipated expenses. What is your pleasure on Article 6?
Make motion to accept Article 6 as written.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 6 as printed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 6 prevails. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to allow all revenues provided by the capital innuents, private donations, and fundraising to be transferred to the rescue, education, and equipment reserve account. What is your pleasure on Article 7?
Motion to be accepted, read.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 7 as printed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 7 prevails. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to accept and spend any and all donations, grants, revenues, reimbursement to state or federal FIBA money, and any or all federal, state, private, or international grants or reimbursement that's provided by the main state legislature, state and main divisions, and partners, or heroes, and/or federal, local, or private sources. Chair will expense for the reading of the sources of funds that are printed outside of the article. What is your pleasure on Article 8?
I'd like to make a motion to amend this article. There is RSU 22 reimbursement. We will not be receiving $2,000 when we get a deal.
So the actual, the motion on the Article 8 is whether you're going to vote to accept and spend any and all donations. And so if it's not coming, you don't have to accept it. Do you agree to that?
So we may not have to amend the law?
I do not think you have to. Article 8 says, Article 8 is the only thing that's a warrant article in front of the body policy.
Accept and spend that he is providing.
Am I correct? Am I interpretation? Am I okay? All right, all right.
You're okay.
So the intent is whatever you can get, yeah. If it's not there, you don't have to.
So I'll make a motion to accept Article 8 as written.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 8 as printed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 8 prevails. And I'm going to just take a quick second and make sure I've got that right. So let's take a look. I just want to make sure I got it right. This is the actual warrant. But this is not quite.
Yeah.
Okay. I have, all right. Before we talk.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I just want to make sure.
Okay. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on half the town to sell and dispose of any excess property. Real estate acquired by the town through nonpayment of taxes thereon, subject to advertising of sand between consecutive days and end of following: a local paper, a town website, Winkie D News, Town Briar, with such terms as they need to be viable, and to execute a quitclaim deed to such property except the select board may allow the immediate previous owner or heirs one generation, up to 90 days to redeem such property by payment of all unpaid taxes on said property, plus interest and fees costs accordingly. And the municipal office shall administer special sales process required by 36 main device statutes 943, seeing for qualifying homestead property that they dream to sell it to anyone other than the former owner. What is your pleasure on Article 9?
Motion to be accepted, read.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 9 as printed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 9 prevails. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to accept any revenues, gifts, unanticipated donations, grants for past and plans that may be provided by individuals, business associations, charitable groups, or other organizations, which have not been listed in any previous or following articles, if the select board determines that the gifts, donations, grants for past and plans are in the best interest of the town. What is your pleasure on Article 10?
Make motion to accept Article 10 as read.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 10 as printed. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those, scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 10 prevails. Article 11, to nominate and elect two members to the planning board for terms of three years, the chair will entertain a motion for, excuse me, nominations for two members for the planning board.
I nominate John Ford.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to nominate John.
Ford.
Ford, okay. Is there any other nominations?
Nominate Andy Hansen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to nominate Andy Hansen. Chair requires that there are other nominations. Scene none, the chair entertain a motion that nominations cease. Does that move?
Second.
All those in favor of nomination ceasing? All those in favor, is this correct process, consistent with the history of the meetings? The chair now entertain a motion to accept the nominations of John Ford and Andy Hansen to position a planning board for the term of three years. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none.
I made the motion to accept John Ford and Andy Hansen to a term, each term of three years for the planning board.
Okay, so motion to be made, second, is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor that motion please indicate. All those opposed, a motion prevails. Thank you for Ford and Hansen. Article 12, to nominate and elect four alternate members to the planning board in terms of one year each. Chair entertain motions?
Nominate Ben Herbest.
Ben, last name?
Herbest.
Herbest?
Tracy, yeah.
Okay. The third question to be made, seconded, is there any other nominations?
John Clemmons.
John Clemmons?
Second.
Motion to be made, seconded for John Clemmons.
Teresa Martin.
Teresa Martin.
Tracy.
Tracy Martin, excuse me.
Brett Summers.
Motion to be made, seconded for Brett Summers. Are there any other nominations? Scene none, the chair entertain a motion that nominations cease. Does that move?
Yes.
Move the seconded that nominations cease. All those in favor of nomination ceasing please indicate. All those opposed, that motion prevails. All those in favor of the nominations of Mr. Herbest, can you state the names of the nominations?
I'll make a motion to accept Ben Herbest, John Clemmons, Tracy Martin, and Brett Summers as alternates of the planning board.
Does everyone hear that? Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those in favor of the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 12 prevails. Article 13, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise appropriate for general government, recommended amount $346,363. There's a breakdown printed outside of the warrant article. What is your pleasure on Article 13?
Motion to be accepted, read.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 13 as printed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 13 prevails. Article 14, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise appropriate for public safety, recommended amount $177,865. What is your pleasure on Article 14?
Motion to be accepted, read.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 14 as printed and read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 14 prevails. Article 15, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise appropriate for animal control, recommended amount $8,377. What is your pleasure on Article 15?
Make the motion, accept as read.
Motion's been made, second, accept Article 15 as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article 15 prevails. Article 16, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise appropriate for road maintenance, recommended amount $656,984. What is your pleasure on Article 16?
Motion to be accepted, read.
Second.
Motion to be made, second, accept Article 16 as read. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Where are road maintenance? That figure, I believe it's too high, and I think we could find somebody in the immediate area that would be able to build cheaper than that part.
Yes, sir.
Only bid will receive for winter maintenance contract.
Why?
Because it put out like everywhere, like on Facebook and all the, all the other places.
We put it on MMA and there was a.
That's not what I was told before, only MMA and no other place.
No, there was a contractor, no, there's a contractor's site it was put on to.
But like all the other contracts that we put out, like the Boeing, you know, Facebook, you know, public people, boy, let me tell you, it was better than a little break. Could have done it significantly different.
Hold on a second. We have some numbers I want to, before we go further, let me just read off some numbers here. So when Wellmans took over, their contract, is this correct, their contract was $175 last year. Then we had sand of $38,750, and that was an additional cost. And then we had the office of $7,400 for a total of $221,409. That was the last year of Wellman's contract, because we bought the sand and we had to pay extra for the office. This year, the contract we got for this year was $297,500, and that included the sand and the office. The difference is $76,000, okay? Hold on one, one second. When we went from Kendall Davis years ago to Wellmans, the difference was $69,500. So that's basically a difference of $7,000 from Wellmans to the person that awarded the contract, Hopkins. So I'm just putting it out there that Wellman's contract was lower, but it did not include the sand, the borrowed sand, it did not include the office, we did, we had to pay additional cost for that. And so the end, the end number was $221,409.
Yep. I got the gentleman.
Thank you. Did you guys want this wrote up a bid?
We always put the contract up for bid.
You did?
We did.
How long?
It was out there for a month.
Almost two or three weeks.
I didn't have to see it at all.
It was on MMA and it was on a construction website.
Construction summary.
Construction summary.
Contract count and pound and that, is that part of the contract?
Yes, yes.
That's all add in one?
Right, it's all, it's all.
Before you separate it that way?
Before we paid extra, the contract was $175,259. Then we had to buy our own sand for $38,750, and we paid an additional $7,400 to file this, this whole site. So this contract includes the sand and the planning of this new project.
You did, you did put up a bid.
Yes, sir.
And the people that got the bid, are they bonded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and he has a lot, they own a lot of equipment.
But lobby, is that?
We have to come in, we ask those questions.
But that, but that bid to take care of the school and that puppet thing up there?
Yes.
It used to be, it was three different bill, right?
Right.
That's what I thought.
Yes, that's correct.
Got two other people who indicate they'd like to speak to the gentleman in back.
Got two comments, I believe with the amount of interest, I believe that we could have more competitive bids on road maintenance than that, except any single bid at that practice. And the second comment I'd like to make, salt shed maintenance. I've heard talk of the town wanting to replace the salt shed. It is my opinion that it could be increased maintenance line item and do some preventative maintenance that that does not need to be completely replaced.
John, we've already done preventative maintenance. We went up there and we had the concrete all hatched probably four, five years ago. We had all the cracks filled, we had concrete. I know his name, it's my opinion. He injects all the cracks, and then we had somebody else come out and spray that whole metal structure. But the salt had, the salt has eaten away that structure even more. So we have done maintenance on it.
Have you had engineers' evaluation done?
Yes.
And they're ready for replacements?
Well, we haven't, we didn't have.
We didn't get any rights. Plymouth and Narin, I met down there one day.
He?
Yes.
All right, we're on Article 16. Excuse me, Article 16, the motion is to accept Article 16 as read and printed. Yes, sir.
After the bid was awarded, was there any contrast because it came in and spoke up and said that they would like to bid on this law contract after the bet?
Well, you know, you, I don't know how you, how you do that. That's a, that's a very legal, fine line we walk in there. Somebody comes in after the bet, after they know what the bid is.
No, 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 that's just an in general question.
They didn't ask for bid package that they heard about, but the bid had already closed.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to accept Article 16. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Scene none, all those who favor the motion please indicate. All those opposed, chairs in doubt, so I'd ask the people to help out. All those who are going to go back again, all those who favor the motion please indicate if I can help with the count.
13.
One, two, three. Keep your hands up again, I apologize. No, it's going to be a calculator, so. One, two, three. 16, okay. All those opposed? The motion fails. Is there any other motion to be made on Article 16?
What, what failed, now what happens?
You can make, the chair entertain no motion unless, unless the intended body politic has zero minds for road maintenance. I've, chair entertain motion for, for a different amount from.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
If the amount approved is less than the contract amount, does that make the contract null and void? Like, how does that work? Like, are you already in a contract? The town doesn't approve the money for the contract. I don't know where did we go from there.
The contract that we have right now, it's essentially in there that don't raise the money at town, it's null and void.
Okay, okay. So then it would go out for bid again? So what we probably should have is a motion, unless you don't want us to do anything to the roads this summer, you should probably have a motion for summer roads and a little bit of money for the salt shed. So I'll make a motion.
We still need winter road amount, right?
What's that?
So we still have to, we still have to have some winter road money. They just don't agree with the amount.
That's, that's, I don't know about that. I'm going to just take care of winter roads. You guys can all figure it out later.
I make the motion to sell summer road, the salt shed, and it's threatening the town to rebid and take low bid on winter road maintenance. Second, do we have to purchase salt?
Yeah.
Is that enough?
Man, we can't even put it out to bid without knowing the amount we have to work with.
You didn't know when you put it out for bid?
So it's easy to sound, so you know. So we need money.
We're going to have to come back to a special topic and raise the money.
The chair suggested.
But it'll be after taxes.
So what do we have, what about when you buy salt?
Who's willing to buy salt?
Will be till fall, will be till fall. So if we amend this article to summer roads and salt shed maintenance, we have to come back to a special meeting for winter roads? Is that what you mean? So we have a bit of a discussion here. I think what we invest in this right now is to amend the article to the summer road.
There's, there's, this is a, this is a complete new motion.
Okay.
Okay, so the chair would recognize you for the purpose of making a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the amount of Article 16 to $332,544.
Is that summer or winter?
It's just the amount for summer and the salt shed.
Motion's been made and seconded, seconded. Okay, so we got.
We got a motion on floor that he said already.
Now, this is the motion that's on the floor.
He said his.
It's still on the mark.
I think they're checking.
I thought that was just part of the discussion. I did not.
I didn't, I didn't take it as a motion, so that's my.
And then that four people said it's seconded, so.
Okay, so the chair would actually just withdraw your motion, please, for purposes of the record. Okay, that makes sense. So the purposes are clear, the person who made that motion, please remove. I will recognize you.
I motion to accept summer roads and salt shed maintenance as written in Article 16, and I motion the town to rebid winter road maintenance and accept low bid contract, which will amend the recommended amount to the low bid included.
So the chair would actually take that motion is substantially similar because it's the same amount of money. Okay, but the motion has been made, is there a second on that motion? Motion's been made, second, to raise appropriate for road maintenance the sum of $332,544 and to further put the contract for winter roads out to bid. Is that a fair motion?
I'm going to amend this slightly.
Okay.
You can't, you can't just take the low bid. I'm not, I'm not saying that we want the highest, but you gotta look at the whole picture. Who's doing it? What they've done, you know, get somebody that's going to crack the joint somewhere else. We don't want them.
Your low bid guys got one truck, that's not your guy.
All right. We can't, we can't have it like that.
Why we know that?
So, so.
Well, if you say.
So the chair would ask that the move, the moving person, sir, if you would accept that as a friendly amendment, that the town would put the winter roads out to bid and follow its best procurement practices.
Agreed.
Okay, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Now, you're comfortable with that motion, all right. Now, here we go. Now we got discussion on that motion. Is there any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
So what happens if you put it back out to bid and then you don't get, bid come in even higher than what it was at, because now the guy who bid once has decided, well, screw that, I'm not bidding again. Or he's going to come in at a higher amount and either you don't have any other people or you don't have, I mean, you could end up, that's an open-ended amount that we're proposing. And a part of that money, just so you know, is to buy salt. We buy our own salt. The town has always bought its own. I'm just pointing out that that's an open-ended amount, so it doesn't.
It's not a.
Chair, the chair could make a suggestion that the select board could, in its procurement, put it out to have a bid to not exceed, and that could affect it. Yes, go ahead.
So if we don't have an amount in here for winter roads, we'll end up coming back to a special town meeting. It'll be after taxes are committed, and so the money to pay that will come out of the town's fund balance for surplus.
Right, the money, the money will have to, to buy no expenses, yeah. So if you, if you don't appropriate the money to exceed, that money, you don't appropriate the money to exceed, that money goes back into fund balance, so we have to take it out of fund balance.
No, it won't go back in because we're not going to raise it to that.
Oh, right.
So.
We've had them agree to a settlement and they're comfortable with it, and then we'll come back.
It is with a little bit of hesitation, I would just offer a suggestion, okay, that one option that you could do is ultimately just come up with a, a number that's less than the number that is created a disagreement, so less than $324,000, but that will, in your best estimate, will safely get you to a winter road budget. So something, if the body, if the assembly fixture is too high, there's some number that won't be considered, too high. So instead of 324, that number might be 300, it might be 294, I don't know, okay? But if that is where you want to go, to allow the town to make its commitment for the purposes of setting the taxes, then I would suggest either the mover withdraw the motion, or that you defeat the motion and the chair would entertain a new motion for a lesser amount than that which is considered. Yes, sir.
So what, what did, what was Wellmans for last?
Wellmans was $175,000, remember, the total, the total was $221,409 is what it cost us between sand and all the plant.
So if we don't.
I can't hear you.
250?
250, but then we still don't have to buy, we still have to buy salt.
And possibly.
We buy salt, we don't buy sand. Sand was needed in the other bid.
So how much a ton of salt?
So last year's number for all three was $573,494.
For all three?
For the summer roads, winter roads.
Yeah, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about.
Yes, she's saying, she's saying that was last year's total budget amount for winter roads and summer roads and salt sheds. That was last year's total amount.
Right.
So maybe we prove that out? Well, they've already approved summer, summer roads and salt shed.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to get us back into the rules for how these, there you go. All right, so a little bit of leeway here, somewhat unique, but the motion that's right now before us is for the three. now before us is for the three thirty-two five forty-four and to put the winter roads out to bid. It's been described that that creates an issue for the purposes of commitment. Uh, so, uh, so if you want to have a different motion, you're gonna need to defeat this motion to go to a new motion, but it is absolutely a pleasure. Is there any further, if you wanna go forward with your motion, or do you like to withdraw it and make another motion? Up to you.
I'm up to amending with the town's consensus, but the moral of the story is the town wants the winter road maintenance back up to bid, and that's what we need here.
So, so if you withdraw your motion, I think I'll, I'll have another motion that's consistent with what you just expressed there. You withdraw your motion?
Yes.
As a second then withdraw? Okay, yes, sir. I've seen more confusing. I think we're fine.
Yeah.
All right, we are now on Article sixteen. Chair would anything a motion?
I made a quick motion that we change the amount on the winter roads to two eighty-nine one forty. We accept summer roads at three thirty-one five forty-four, salt shed maintenance at a thousand, and we send out the bid. Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. So the numbers are different than what is printed in Article sixteen. The winter roads number is just indicated is two eight nine one four four. The other numbers remain the same, and as part of that motion, the town, the select board will put winter roads out to bid and follow its normal procurement practices. Is that a fair statement of the motion and the intent of assembly? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Absolutely fair for, for further discussion and questions. Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article sixteen prevails. Thank you. Article seventeen. To see what sum of money the town would vote to raise appropriate for waste and solid waste, the recommended amount, one hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, what is your pleasure on Article seventeen?
Make a motion to accept Article seventeen.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article seventeen as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article seventeen prevails. Article eighteen, see what sum of money the town would vote to raise appropriate for building, repair, and maintenance, recommended amount thirteen thousand dollars, what is your pleasure on Article eighteen?
Motion is written.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article eighteen as read. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
What is the three thousand dollars on the building? What's the other buildings? We just built a fire station. It's in perfect shape.
That would be for.
For what?
The pump house, the.
What's gonna be done up there?
We don't know. We never know what.
Well, you gotta, you gotta appropriate money to fix something. That's why there's always appropriated, appropriate money. If there's a problem, the money's there.
We have the building fund, don't we?
It's, it's, it's not the same. It's not the same as this fund.
Is there any further discussion on the motion on Article eighteen? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article eighteen prevails. Article nineteen, see what sum of money the town would vote to raise appropriate for insurance, recommended amount thirty-six thousand one hundred and forty dollars, what is your pleasure on Article nineteen?
Your motion to accept Article seventeen.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article nineteen as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article nineteen prevails. Article twenty, see what sum of money the town would vote to raise appropriate for the library, recommended amount one thousand dollars, what's your pleasure on Article twenty?
Motion passed, is written.
Motion's been made to accept Article twenty as, as read, read, or written. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty prevails. Article twenty-one, see what sum of money the town would vote to raise appropriate for E nine one one, recommended amount five hundred dollars, what's your pleasure on Article twenty-one?
Motion is read.
Motion, so the motion's been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-one as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. Motion on Article twenty-one prevails. Article twenty-two, to see what sum of money the town would vote to raise appropriate for cemetery maintenance, recommended amount twenty thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars, what's your pleasure on Article twenty-two?
Motion is read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-two as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
Do we have a section?
Well, I was just gonna ask.
So we have a section, or do you let me know?
You don't have a section, you don't have a cemetery, so are we as humble as we ask and ask and ask? Oh, is there someone really that, that, and two in place of sex? We've been using that's what sister.
Yeah, Billy, um.
Ashton.
Ashton, lives in town, and he's a veteran and volunteers, and he's been taking care of them. He also puts the flags out, um, he's been working on helping in order with stones and, um.
Have you been able to pay him some?
He doesn't want it.
So this money isn't, hopes that he'll find.
He hopes that we'll find one, yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion on the motion on Article twenty-two? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty-two prevails. Article twenty-three, to see what sum of money the town would vote to raise appropriate for general assistance, recommended amount of one thousand dollars, what is your pleasure on Article twenty-three?
Motion seconded, red.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-three as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty-three prevails. Article twenty-four, to see if the town would vote to apply revenue from the following trust funds to reduce the amount of raising taxation for roads and schools, recommended amount of twenty thousand dollars, and the trust is indicated, the Nolan School Trust Fund, eight thousand dollars, Vicar Road Trust Fund, six thousand dollars, and Vicar School Trust Fund, six thousand dollars, what is your pleasure on Article twenty-four?
Motion accepted, red.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-four as read. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion?
What's the, what's the one about for school, in schools, what's left? Is that two? What?
Yes. These are trust funds that were left to the town, managed by an outside agency, and we get a check.
Yes, I know what that's for. I was just wondering, you said it's, it's, it's gonna be for, uh, uh, yeah, roads and schools.
Right, the Nolan School Fund is specific, it has to be used towards the.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, okay, thank you. Sorry.
No, no issues. Any further discussion? Yes.
What's this taxation of roads and schools? What's that mean?
It says trust fund to reduce the amount to be raised from taxation.
Helps reduce your taxes. Put this as a revenue towards the budget, so it reduces your, your.
Any further discussion on the motion on Article?
You've already raised towards that?
Say that again.
Would you, would the money, you're asking in here for these?
No, this is money that comes in that we put towards taxes.
Yeah, I know that. Have you, have you figured that in on reducing some of the?
We will when we do the tax committee.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty-four prevails. Article twenty-five, to see if the town would vote to transfer a following funds from undesigned designated fund balance surplus to reduce the amount of raising taxation, recommended amount sixty thousand dollars, what's your pleasure on Article twenty-five?
Motion seconded, red.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-five as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty-five prevails. Article twenty-six, to see if the town would vote to raise appropriate one thousand dollars for the building reserve fund, what is your pleasure on Article twenty-six?
Motion is read.
Second.
Motion's been made and read to accept Article twenty-six as read. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty-six prevails. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town would vote to raise appropriate two thousand twenty dollars to IT support, what's your pleasure on Article twenty-seven?
Motion is read.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-seven as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty-seven prevails. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town would vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town of Newburgh to enter three-year contract for necessary services, i.e. trash and winter roads. What is your pleasure on Article twenty-eight?
Motion accepted, red.
Motion's been made and seconded.
No.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-eight as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
We would like to amend the article to state, uh, you have a five-year lease term, uh, five-year contract period instead of three.
I don't think it's properly for the body. You printed the warrant, and the town needs, you can, you can maybe lessen the term, but I don't think for the taxpayers that aren't here, you can extend it. Is that, is that your recommend?
That's right.
I guess so, yeah.
It's, it's a, it's an interesting point of whether you can do that or not.
Yeah, I know you can't raise the money amount.
Right, it's not a money amount, but if, if you're trying to give fair notice to the people who didn't come, uh, the presumption is, can you have a longer-term contract and, and can you, can you substantively amend that warrant article without having a newly printed article? So, uh, no one's accepted your first amendment. There's been a motion on the floor to accept Article twenty-eight as, as read, and that's the discussion. Are you making a motion to amend?
I am making a motion to amend to a five-year contract. We give one five.
Chair reversed before I rule whether it's in order, but see if there's a second on the motion.
Second.
Okay, the chair will now rule it out of order. Uh, and so I'm gonna not accept that as an appropriate motion for the body. However, the way that works is, that's just my opinion and my ruling. Uh, you can now appeal the ruling of the chair. You appeal the ruling of the chair?
Okay, so I'm appealing the ruling of the chair.
Okay, is there a second to appealing my ruling? Okay, so I ruled motion out of order. Uh, if those of you want to, uh.
Amend it?
If you want to amend it, then you're going to, um, you're going to raise your hand if you agree with my ruling, and, and it will be out of order. If you don't want to agree my ruling, you can, you can overrule me, and then the motion will be properly before the body. But those of you who, if you want to amend the article to go to a five-year contract, then don't vote to agree with my ruling. Okay? So, if you, for those of you who are in favor of my ruling, please indicate.
What, what is there?
Those of you who do not think my ruling should be sustained, please indicate. Okay. So, so the chair will now allow your motion.
Let me slide out.
Nope, I've got it. So the motion has, there's an amendment to the motion to decrease it, uh, to five-year contracts for necessary service. You mean up to five-year contracts?
Up to five years.
Okay. Okay, that's another issue. You gotta be careful on how these are technically written.
Our services don't want, the explanation is that people don't want three-year contracts.
So a motion's been, the motion is to amend, the main motion on Article to go up to five years, it's been seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion to amend, sir?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Miss Renee, maybe she could give some discussion about why going to.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna divert here to give a sort of decision. What happens if she handles the contracts after we got them?
So, we, um, have been working with a copier company to get a new copier, and, um, he presented a, uh.
Proposal.
Proposal. And they are now doing five-year leases instead of three.
But our trash contractor is three.
Yes.
So, that's, it's just a housing, okay, our trash contractor is three, our, our body contractor is three, this is a copier, um, lease, lease, that we would like to sign or she would like to sign for the office.
But why would it mark?
It's a five.
Yeah, for roads.
I, I can't handle.
Sorry, why would it mark trash in front of roads, not IT stuff or computers, you know, copier, whatever?
It's just an example for trash. It's a, a showing you an example of, of some of the stuff that we might.
Right, and it'd be included in that, you know, it's signed to go five years.
Right.
All right, uh, further discussion on the motion to amend, yes?
Can we limit that motion to administrative, like, office contracts instead of it applying to every contract?
Yes.
Guys, you're way beyond the scope of the actual printed warrant. It's, it's in front of the town meeting. So, I mean, to be, to be blunt, right, you could, you know, this, this warrant article wasn't. It's not just the people that are here, the people about presumably saw the notice and argued.
Sir, may I withdraw my amendment? What she's gonna do is we're gonna negotiate for a three-year contract with the copier.
Thank you.
When it gets.
This motion to amend has been withdrawn, the second to that motion has been drawn. Motion on the floor on Article twenty-eight, to see if the town would vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town, then to three-year contract for necessary services. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty-eight prevails. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town would vote to raise appropriate five thousand dollars for public safety capital, what's the count? What's your pleasure on Article twenty-nine?
Motion accepted, red.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-nine as written. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article twenty-nine prevails. Article thirty, to see if the town would vote to raise appropriate one thousand dollars for the Newburgh planning board to purchase a new computer and printer, what's your pleasure on Article thirty?
Motion is read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article thirty as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article thirty prevails. Article thirty-one, to see if the town would vote to raise appropriate three thousand six hundred dollars for the Newburgh Fire and Rescue Department to purchase two A D D machines, what's your pleasure on Article thirty-one?
Motion be seconded, red.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-one as read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll, yes, sir.
Where are those gonna be? Two A D D machines.
Two A D Ds on each interior, one will be on our rescue truck and one will be on our lead engine.
Is that the only one we have in the town?
At this time.
Do we have one here, or?
I don't know. Cindy, do you have one in the town office? No. The one, the only other ones are the three guys that are out on regular to the cost or have a lab, got one. Uh, Craig, you got one? There's a total of five that we have out, and they're all at the ten-year mark right now. They were all bought on a grant way back, and we're at the ten-year mark for their usability.
Is there a way we can get one for the town here? If Mr. Dome sees his taxes, he's gonna have a heart attack.
If Mr. Dome sees his taxes, he's gonna have heart attack.
Well, you add to it, and it's...
I'm just saying.
You're just adding to it, love it.
Any further discussion on the motion? Yes.
What is an A D D machine? What is an A D D? Nice. Go ahead.
I need a vote to talk, I don't live in town.
I will, uh, with, see unanimous consent, seeing no objection, you have it, go for it.
Select. So it's an automated external liqueurator, if somebody dies, put a pad here near, give us the ability to shun, maybe give your heart in the back.
Thank you, is there any further discussion on the motion? Yes.
There's two now?
Now, yes. Uh, I think we're gonna start with these two. We might be able to do one through the budget this year. If not, we could come back at the next town meeting for another one for the A D D two.
Well, he would just express his awareness that the ten-year wait's...
Yep, that's kinda, this is the replacement plan for those.
We're gonna try to spread it out, so we don't have to purchase mail, or... Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article thirty one prevails. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to establish a reserve account known as the Newburg Veteran and Volunteer Firefighter Association Memorial Reserve. What is your pleasure on Article thirty-two?
I make a motion to accept it as written.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, accept Article thirty-two as written, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Is that the same as when we've been raising funds for, for veteran memorial already? Is it the same there?
Yes.
Why are they even here?
So, Katie, in the office, we've been doing banks to raise money for a veteran memorial. We have an account for that. We wanna start this one, so the next article that we're gonna do has money that will go into that.
Cindy, how much is in that account right now that you guys have raised for the, at this point?
I'm not sure.
There's like six or seven thousand dollars in there. Yeah, I believe so.
Any further discussion on the motion on Article thirty-two? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion please indicate. All those opposed, the motion on Article thirty-two prevails. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to spend the proceeds from the sale of the old fire station for the following: Sixty thousand dollars into the Newburg Veteran and Volunteer Fire Department Memorial Reserve, forty thousand for paving a town office parking lot, seventeen thousand dollars for playground improvements, eight thousand for installation of a third hydrant and finish the second one of North Road, three thousand for sign for a fire department building, and eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents for the building reserve fund. What's your pleasure on Article thirty-three?
Make a motion to accept it as written.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, accept Article thirty-three as written, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
The totality of these funds is at the sale of the fire station?
Yes. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes.
What, what are the improvements for the playground, that's seventeen thousand dollars? Well, we have gotten, that big red slide up there?
Yeah.
Has two big holes in it. And Katie has written, you did a grant getting this?
Cindy did the grant, so Cindy got a grant through the county...
Opscat County.
Through the Opscat County, and we have purchased a new playground piece. So the funds that we got was just enough to get the playground piece and the installation for it. So we can't, we don't have enough funds to buy the wood chips for safety around it, so we need the wood chips, the leveling, things like that to finish getting the piece in there, because our current piece is very rusted, falling apart, like Renee just said, the big poorly slide has two holes in it, and it's become uneven.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion on Article thirty-three? Yes.
Sixty thousand into Newburg Veteran and Volunteer Fire Department Memorial Reserve. Where, what's... Yeah, what, what goes on, what goes on with that? I mean, is that allocated to something?
So, the way for that is, we always put together a group of people from the community to, to together and figure out how we should spend that money, how we can... We have some ideas, but it's really, you know, money that people in the past need to figure out what's gonna be done with. So, I mean, that's basically it.
We're looking for community involvement on that. We set aside and we create a committee and they decide how this is gonna proceed with that amount of money.
So I've spoken to a few people about doing this and, you know, anybody else is there, and I think we'd like to get the people together and make this happen. You know, we'll hope for it.
But why does it go into Newburg Veteran and Volunteer Fire Department Memorial Reserve? Is that just the name of it?
It's just, it's a...
The name of the account?
You have to allocate it to an account, you have to create a spot for it.
Right.
Or the money all goes back into the funds at all.
So, so that's just what it's named versus being a mad money account, right?
No, no, we, no, we allocate, we don't get a mad money account, that's not...
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
This, this is all money that won't be touched. The people are gonna figure, they'll come back to the town and we'll decide as a whole what should be done.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, so...
Yes, sir.
So you're saying, when you guys get ready to do something with this money, you're gonna come back to the townspeople and with what you think?
Yeah, we're not, we're not, that money, no approval from anybody. The idea that I wanna have is, you know, the people that are involved in the town that who's been here and have ideas.
Yes, yes, sir.
I just thought we would, we would get more money out of that building than what we're getting, because we did a lot of work up there, and it wasn't the fire departments until it became municipal. I'd like to see the seventeen thousand come to us and, and, uh, if they wanna pay the parking lot, they'll get the money somewhere else for it.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Smile all you want.
Any further discussion on the motion, please? Okay, all those in favor of the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article thirty-three prevails. Article thirty-four, shall the town vote to authorize an increase, an increase in the property tax levy limit established for the town near Newburg by state law? In the event that the municipal budget approved, then the following article, articles would result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax limit. What's your pleasure on Article thirty-four?
Motion is read.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, accept Article thirty-four as read, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Could somebody explain the alternative?
Go ahead.
So this is a house key thing the state requires us to do. It's a, a form we have to fill out, and we have to have permission if we're gonna go over. Uh, so this is a, like a standard article, just to increase the state that we did it.
Chair, sometimes it's a motion, a, a question that's posed in, in meetings like this is, of the articles that have been voted on, in your opinion, would that actually result in an increase in the tax levy?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, all right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion please indicate. All those opposed, the motion on Article thirty-four prevails. Article thirty-five, shall ordinance entitled land use of the town of Newburg be enacted? What's your pleasure on Article thirty-five?
Motion is read.
Motion been made and seconded, to accept Article thirty-five as read, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Has it been any real big changes to this ordinance?
Uh, there'll be step back changes on it. Uh, it'll go from, it's right now a hundred feet from the edge of the road of a pro building, it'll be seventy-five from the center. Seventy-five from the center of the road will be the change, instead of a hundred from that edge. Also, we are, we need to comply with, uh, the state may have an L D two thousand three that we have to comply with by July, and, uh, it's about accessory blowing units and affordable housing. So, we, we wrote everything to block it.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on Article thirty-five please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article thirty-five prevails. Article thirty-six, shall ordinance entitled shore land zoning of the town of Newburg be enacted? What is your pleasure on Article thirty-six?
Motion is read.
Motion been made and seconded, accept Article thirty-six as read, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Any more major changes in that?
Uh, major changes will be, it'll be less restrictive than the last one.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion please indicate. All those opposed, motion on Article thirty-six prevails. Article thirty-seven, shall ordinance entitled solar of the town of Newburg be enacted? What is your pleasure on Article thirty-seven?
Motion is read.
Motion been made and seconded, accept Article thirty-seven as read, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
What's the purpose behind this?
Uh, purpose behind this is, we allow large-scale, uh, solar arrays right now, as we speak. If we enact this, we will restrict it later. And we will also require escrow for any company that we have, so we'll have the money to tear them down and ship. And screen. So, two-way payment, instead of whatever.
Yes, sir.
That, that, that probably all the hazardous material and stuff, but all the...
Yes, well, whatever they have to put in escrow. That way, if they go out of business, they have the money to protect them.
Is there any further discussion on the motion on Article thirty-seven? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion please indicate. All those opposed, the motion on Article thirty-seven prevails. See no further business to come before the town meeting based on the printed warrants. Chair and entertaining motion for adjournment? What have been made, seconded, non-debatable, all those in favor of the motion please indicate.
I like that question.
Yes, sir.
I like that question, huh?
Uh, well, it's not, go ahead, I'll, I'll, I'll give you...
I don't have a favor, we have three flat enough, we have a town manager. Now, how can they give Christmas for them for the help, which I love Katie a lot, and that they all do good job? But how can you give them Christmas money? What down you live in?
Well, it's, I'm not gonna allow this call, it's not related to a motion. You can bring it up as a select board meeting, or you can ask for it to be a special warrant article. Uh, there's no discussion on, uh, debate on a motion to adjourn. The chair would say, is there any, all those in favor of the motion for adjournment please indicate. All those opposed, the motion prevails, we adjourn, thank you, folks.